I'd like to call to order the December 12th, 2016, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer, here. Ms. Simorusti, here. Ms. Gowan. Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Magaziner.
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dy-Nicola. Ms. Pierre-Tribono. Ms. Richardson.
Here.
Mr. Roslowitz.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters. This exemption is permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to executive session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Into regular session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Flag's behind us.
Yes.
(inaudible)
Can you come and do that every time we have a meeting? That was really fantastic. That made me happy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any communications on the agenda since our last meeting.
Actually, I have a letter to read. The district received a thank you letter on behalf of the Highland Park Community Food Pantry for the incredible food drive conducted in all four of the schools in the town. So they were thanking the district for that.
Nice. And I'm assuming that's for Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving food drives that happened in each of the, I, each of the schools?
I would imagine so.
Great. I think those are, are those usually coordinated by the PTOs? Is it the PTO that coordinates those?
I don't know. I think that BARTL, it was the Student Council.
Oh, is it?
I don't know.
Well, thank you to everyone who helped coordinate those. Okay, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the regular public meeting and executive session from November 14th, 2016, and we have the public workshop meeting and executive session minutes from December 5th, 2016. Did anybody have any questions, concerns, corrections, thoughts? Nothing? Okay, so Linda, we can go ahead and move those now?
Yes.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan? Yes. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the student representative report with Lillian.
Okay. Irving will begin Spirit Week on December 19th with themes such as Long Winter's Nap and Mustache Day, and the responsive classroom workshop is on December 13th. The BARTL Awards Assembly is on December 21st. The middle school band and choir concert at 7:00 PM is on December 15th, and the Fall Sports Awards were last Tuesday on December 6th. The high school will be holding its annual choir concert on December 21st, and DECA has been fundraising for veterans and has gathered several boxes of holiday cards and also materials to donate to the Menlo Park Veterans Home. The winter holiday assembly is on the 23rd, and the gender-neutral bathroom policy survey is going to be going out to students very soon, along with the honor roll breakfast, which is for 265 students on December 23rd, and it's supposed to be ruffles and ice cream.
Sounds good. So you said there's a gender-neutral, could you say that again? I missed that.
Yeah, the gender-neutral bathroom survey is on, is going to be rolled out soon, and it's to determine which bathroom in the school will be gender-neutral.
Oh, fantastic. In the high school?
Yeah. The student congress representatives selected a couple of bathrooms we thought were good choices, and between those choices, the students will go into the pack.
Fantastic. I like it. Thank you very much, Lillian. Anybody have any questions for Lillian? Okay, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
We have some very special guests here tonight, and I would like to introduce our first special guest. This is Freeborn, who is the principal of Irving School.
I'm losing my voice, so I just wanted to let everybody know. I'm going to do my best. Okay, I need to just have Fawn. Come on up, Fawn, with your mom. Come on up. There we go. Are you ready?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. I'm here for a student spotlight from Irving. This is Fawn. Fawn is a kindergarten student in Mrs. Parham's class. Fawn's teachers have so many wonderful things to say about her. She's always pleasant and kind. She enters the school and classroom each day with a smile, as you can see. Fan loves her teachers. She's an expert hugger and shows her appreciation for them all the time with kind words and a warm smile. Fawn is a wonderful friend. She's so generous and helpful and will go out of her way to help someone. She has been known to cheer up a teary friend in seconds. Fawn is a great learner. She is eager and enthusiastic. She enjoys music and art and ESL and gym. Fawn has such an infectious, positive, happy demeanor that brightens our day at Irving. Congratulations, Fawn. We are so lucky that you are an Irving dragon.
(applause)
We're going to take a picture, okay?
Do we do a picture? Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. She's a kindergarten. Oh. I should have invited Nora here. She'd love this.
Yay! (applause) I can't even collect myself to.
I want to see her when she grows up.
Yes, yes. For the remainder of my report, I don't have any formal presentation, so what I do like to do is leave open the opportunity to make any general announcements. I do have one announcement to make, and that is to be sure that members of our community and board who didn't have a chance to see Classroom Close Up last night can still see the BARTL Courtyard Project on PBS, which for us, I think, is Channel 13. There'll be future air dates. I also recommend you go to NJClassroomCloseUp.com. You can Google it, Classroom Close Up, and they'll be streaming the video, which is about 10 minutes long, in the next few days. I'll be sure to post the video to Facebook and our district website when it comes out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very welcome. I could have sworn that maybe something came out saying that we'd be able to embed it on our website. Maybe I was reading something else.
Well, we can. We can, we can, but when, once it goes live on their website, we'll pull it in.
Okay, perfect. All right, that'd be fantastic. I'd love to just have that available for perpetuity.
Yes, I went to look for it today because it's supposed to go live 24 hours after, but I think I looked a little too early, so it probably will be there tonight or by tomorrow.
Wonderful.
So we should be able to pull it on.
Great. Thank you.
We should have like a showing of it or something at BARTL, like invite people to come and watch it.
Screening.
Yeah, screening. All right, so we will move on to, after the shortest superintendent's report in history, I think.
That's all for my report. The shortest on record.
We'll move on to the board committee reports. So first, curriculum and instruction. Michelle?
Item number one is approval of the field trip requests. Number two is approval of university graduate students for teaching, internships, junior practicum, and observations. And number three is approval of Access 2.0 for ELL students training.
Okay. Do we know what Access 2.0 is?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is the assessment that students are required to take to determine if they qualify for English language learning services.
So is that like that we've used that historically?
Oh, absolutely.
This is just a?
It's a state-driven test.
Gotcha.
I don't know who makes it. Could find out for you.
So the teachers listed here, they're all ESL teachers?
Correct.
Yep.
So for each building?
How nice, exactly. One per building.
I like that.
That's a pretty fabulous thing. Okay.
So that's it for curriculum?
All right. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for Michelle? Nope? Okay, so we'll move on to finance and facilities. Mark?
Yes, so, so last time we went over many of these, but there's some new ones and there's some items I wanted to discuss specifically. So in the area, so I'm going to jump to 13, and again, I just wanted to say thank you to the Highland Park Educational Foundation for the funds. It's always welcome, and they're doing excellent, wonderful things. Item 14, I wanted to point out that the amounts revised are slightly higher, so we're getting some extra money that we didn't expect, and unfortunately, as we know, we're going to be spending money that we unfortunately didn't budget, so this at least make up for some of it. I did have a question, which I apologize for not asking over the weekend, and it may have to do with me not being to a meeting a month ago and then three months ago, which is the Breakfast After the Bell Pilot Program. So I don't think that was on the agenda last week. If it was, I missed it, but I don't really know the program, and so Scott or Linda, I wonder if you could just make a few comments. The Breakfast After the Bell Program.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for the opportunity because it is something we're excited about. So for about a year, the borough and the district has been looking at this program. What we've decided is that BARTL is, has the most, oh, the teachers have the most ownership and buy-in right now to start this program. We had a meeting with the Food Services Director, as well as all the principals, about a month ago, and what we realized is that the bigger need we have is to encourage more kids to eat breakfast, whether it's breakfast we provide or that they qualify for to the free or reduced program. So what we'll do at BARTL with the board's go-ahead is incorporate Breakfast After the Bell. That will take place during the morning meetings that occur after the kids settle in to the school day. Students will receive pre-made cold packs of breakfast. They'll be distributed by Food Services, so the teachers won't have to actually distribute, except in their classrooms. There'll be bags brought to their rooms each morning. Irving would like to do a better job advertising the current breakfast program by doing two things, sending flyers home and also establishing a series of easels out in the hallway when you first walk into the Irving entrance to remind parents and kids when they drop their kids off that, hey, if you qualify for breakfast, you should direct yourself to the cafeteria. The middle school, that the high school already has a breakfast set up, and Lillian will tell you, the middle school's been an issue because once we added the middle school and used the shared space in the cafeteria at the high school, we lost for a while the cafeteria services in the middle school cafeteria when you first walk into the entrance. So what Food Services will be doing is, after break, opening up a satellite breakfast station in the middle school, which we think will also encourage those kids who hang out inside on cold weather days at the middle school to eat breakfast. And of course, if they qualify, they'll get their breakfast. If they have to purchase, it's as little as $1 for breakfast for those, depending on what they choose to buy. And the high school will continue its efforts. So overall, we're looking to encourage more kids to eat breakfast, but we're formally trying, piloting, the Breakfast After the Bell Program at BARTL.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry. He was responding to you originally.
No, I didn't hear any of the questions. Please.
I apologize. So just for my own clarity, because I may have missed it, so at Irving, breakfast is for students who qualify financially?
Correct.
And BARTL, this pilot program will be for all students who are interested in?
Absolutely.
Eating breakfast? Great, all students.
Go ahead, Linda, I'll try my?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to interject. Breakfast is available for all. It's a dollar for people who have to pay full price.
Okay.
And the reduced, there's a reduced price for students eligible for reduced price, and then it's free for students eligible for free. So it is available to everyone.
It is at all the schools?
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And it already is now. It's just, now we're just changing the time. Right. We've had a breakfast program. Right.
So right now, any student can come in before the bell at all the schools?
Yes.
And the idea of Breakfast After the Bell is to encourage more kids to eat because they will have settled into this class and be catered to essentially.
That's wonderful.
And the breakfast is delivered to the classroom.
How does it work, the Breakfast After the Bell? Do the students, do they come around with a cart and say, who wants breakfast today? Or how does it, how do they organize that?
Good question. So every month, the, Mr. Benjamin will be asked to survey the students to determine if they want their breakfast.
I see.
He did put out a preliminary survey. Those of you who are BARTL parents probably saw that survey come home, or it will, I'm sorry, it will be. We're waiting on the board's action before we do anything, but you will get a survey. There'll be a little slip at the bottom of the letter, and it'll ask if you want to participate. So that'll be the kickoff survey.
I see. I see, so only parents who sort of sign up through the survey will have breakfast provided for their child? In other words, if you want breakfast for your child, you better sign up on that survey? Is that how it works?
Yes. Well, yes, I don't anticipate us discouraging kids.
Oh, I didn't mean it like that.
If they come and they're hungry and?
Will there be breakfast available if I show up at school and I'm hungry and my parent didn't fill out the survey? Excellent.
What I was told is that the survey helps us with inventory, making sure that?
Predict, right.
The proper number of packets planned.
But either way, you come to school, breakfast is available. That's great.
Correct.
That's fantastic.
And we need to just encourage more kids to eat, and we'll work to do better to push the word out.
That's wonderful. That's fantastic.
For all.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Apologies for interrupting.
The only question that I have is what kind of breakfast is available?
Fruit loops, I hope. And spray.
Somehow I don't think so, but I'm just thinking about our students with food allergies, whether or not there would be options.
Oh, boy.
You know, if it's a cold cereal and the cereal is wheat and it's served with milk, then a student who has a wheat allergy and a milk allergy can't eat. So I don't know if we've, I don't know what's included in that, in that breakfast.
I don't know the answer to that question, but I'll find out. I know we talked about the nut allergy concern because that seems to be a more prevalent allergy, and they are going to be distributing nut-free foods, but there are other allergies, so I'll look into that.
But all the food will be nut-free in terms of environmental contamination? So, okay, so if I have a nut allergy, I won't be sitting next to somebody eating a big old nut, nutty breakfast? All the breakfast food will be nut-free?
Correct.
Regardless of whether you personally have an allergy? Wonderful, thank you.
I'll send an email to the board to follow up that question, about other allergies that may exist and what we're doing to work that out.
Well, I bet BARTL parents are going to be excited about this. This sounds fantastic.
Okay, I'm going to go on. Scott, thank you. So I wanted to talk for a moment about the audit report, which we got over the, we got over the, via email over the last few days, and then we got a hard copy today. And so the first thing about the audit report is I wanted to thank Linda. These reports are really hard to do, and, you know, we've talked during the week, and Linda was putting in lots of time to get the auditors' corrections and numbers, and it's a really big deal to do an audit. So I wanted to thank Linda and her staff for the work that's gone on to get, make this happen. I also wanted to say that there's an extra item on this. That's item 22, which we got a copy of. We have to file a corrective action report even though there's no corrective actions. And that means the auditor, at least, was clear about our numbers. I think they're not taking, in general, auditors don't take, depending on the kind of audit, responsibility, but they at least have said they've got, they've got numbers that they believe are correct, that we, you know, that we've given them, that we take responsibility for, and with those numbers, there's no corrective actions. I was asked by a couple of people, so what's an audit report? And so I wanted to say just a very few words about that. So businesses that reach a certain size, and also businesses that are public businesses and businesses perhaps that are being sold, need to go through an audit. And an audit can be a plain old audit or a certified audit, and what it means is, again, the certification may depend on getting a lot more data, an auditor will come in, in a private business or in a public business, and actually send letters out to customers to make sure the customers really purchase the goods. They'll send letters out to distributors. Did you really order all of this for your business in Indonesia that's importing American goods? Did this really happen? And we'll go to the banks and get the banks to certify that the amounts that have been moved around are the correct amounts. And so some of the scandals that have, that occurred over numbers of years that you read about occasionally, that's because an auditor came in and said somebody is pushing stuff into the channel, meaning that they're telling the distributor to take goods and then they'll take it back on January 1st, so that their books look good for the year, so the executive gets a large bonus. Now, we're a governmental organization. We have to do these audits. They're very serious. The, I have, I have the book here. This is quite a book. Contrary to rumor, I didn't memorize it. A little joke. It's really, really, really complex. And I do have some questions for the auditors when they come, but it looks, it looks, you know, when you look at numbers, specific numbers in it, that, the numbers that we have, it looks to my eye that it's exactly on target. So Linda can answer any questions, and I can answer some questions about the purpose and the quality, but I think, as I said, a thank you, and it really looks like the district has done a very good job here. And we will, we will be reading, I think I'll read 22 into the minutes since it's an addendum, and I'll do it now, and then we can vote on it later. So 2022 is this adoption of corrective action plan for audit. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the submission of the attached corrective action plan to the Middle Plus County Department of Education, which shows no audit recommendations in the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016, submitted by Bedard Kurwike and Company, CPA's PC of Flemington, New Jersey. So we're, and we have that corrective report. We've all gotten a copy of it, which has nothing on it. We have to file it. And that's it. And there's a lot of new, different items there, but I think they were all standard kind of form, you know, in the, in the whole finance report, but if anybody has questions, please ask away.
Nope. Anybody have any questions for Mark? Nope. All right, so seeing none, let's move on to personal communication. Judy's not here. Sharice, would you be able to fill in?
Absolutely. So this week, we'll be looking at a variety of things, actually. We have an extended maternity replacement for social studies teacher. Superintendent's asking us to extend the time that Donna Martino will be filling in. After-school programs, staff, and a few different advisors and coaches for a variety of areas, everything from global awareness to cheerleading to dance. Oh, sorry, those are the resignations. We have three resignations, three, four, and five, were our resignations. And then our scheduled B positions. Seven, eight, and nine, seven, eight, and nine, we looked at last week. The only thing that has changed there is that you'll note that the step is placed in, as well as the salary to be paid for the approval of the Assistant Administrative Secretaries, and the effective dates have all been set as well. So you'll see that there's a slight adjustment with those, but that will be effective. Scott, you wanted to?
Yes, I'd like to ask, the board would allow me to write in a change of effective date. I'd like that date to be tomorrow instead of January 3rd. So the effective date for starting the assistant admins in their new roles would be December 13th.
So for all three, because there's two different dates. There's two that are January 3rd and one is December 19th, so all three we've moved to?
Correct. Well, we're talking numbers seven, nine, and 10.
Oh, seven, nine, and 10.
Not eight.
Okay, not eight. Okay.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, and you want all of, all of those to read for December the?
13.
13th.
Remember to change the year.
Right. December 13th, 2016.
16.
Right. December 13th?
Yep.
2016. Mark's pointing out we have to change the year, too.
And that'll be for seven, nine, and 10, then? That change?
Correct.
Okay. Number 11 is an approval for a leave placement for the guidance counselor. Superintendent's recommending Tamika Lewis for that position. And Megan McNally has been selected as the interim assistant principal at the middle high school. I talked with Scott about this position, and they are already looking at how to fill her duties that she is currently doing. And did you want to make any comment on that?
I'll just say that we have a strong candidate in mind already, and if that candidate doesn't work out, we will be posting an ad in the Star Ledger next Sunday, well, this Sunday, for Ms. McNally's replacement position.
Okay. 13 is just the sidebar agreement that had been discussed previously. 14 through 17 are requests for leaves of absence for various reasons, 18 being the compensation for prep for in-district training. number 19, which was the discussed, which was the Title I Before-School ELL Tutor. There are now three additional items, 20, 21, and 22, which is asking for an appointment of Title I Before-School Dragon Tutors at Irving School. This would shift the tutoring program from after-school to a before-school program, and that would be over here in Irving. And 23 is the approval of the substitute teachers list.
So, actually, I'll ask, I'm sorry. I'll let you go all the way through and then I'll ask. Are you done? Okay. So what time would that start, Scott? Because Irving, well, it starts at 8:30, so?
Not sure about the time.
In the minutes, it's, it's, I'm sorry, in the agenda, it's 7:30 AM. 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM tutoring. Irving starts at 8:30. Yeah.
We switched to the before-school program instead of after-school for a few reasons, one of which was the teachers felt that the kids were just too tired at the end of the day. The other is, actually, that was the primary reason, but let me also explain if you don't, if you'd like to know, that, this is a response I got when I asked Ms. Freeborn why we went to before-school. The kids were tired at the end of the day, and they found that moving them to the morning, into the morning slot, has them receiving more benefits from the program. We have not, it appears, seen any drop in our attendance, but Ms. Richardson asked me a few questions about this, so I'm going to get back to the, Ms. Richardson and board about whether there's any impact on transportation is one issue.
Right, so the concern is, transportation was already an issue for the after-school tutoring program for school, students that received busing, either for ADA requirements or who, for students who were living out on Cedar Lane. It's going to be a transportation issue again for the before-school tutoring program, and part of my concern is that if families don't have access to a vehicle and don't live within walking distance of the schools, they may not be able to take advantage of the school tutoring program for economic reasons. for economic reasons because to pay for taxis and such, taxi from Cedar Lane to Irving School, and they would have to also take it back. So wherever they were going from, the parents were going back to, they would also have to take the taxi there as well. So families could end up incurring expenses trying to participate. But my other concern was that people would choose not to participate because it would incur greater cost and that they, you know, we could be missing students who may not have participated previously in the tutoring for the same reason, but who could benefit from being in the tutoring program. And the other question that I had was about how that would work with the breakfast program and whether or not students would have access to breakfast.
And I think you asked if they were actually eating breakfast during the tutoring time, the same time. So I'll get back to the Board on that, including you, obviously.
And I, to me, 7:30 is just zoinks. I mean, that would sure as heck dissuade me. You wouldn't catch me getting anywhere at 7:30 in the morning. So, I mean, I'd be concerned about drop-off. I mean, I know you're saying that you haven't seen that. So this has already been implemented. This change has already happened? When did the change?
Since this year, September.
Since September, really?
Well, October. We didn't start the program until October.
Right, right, right.
Could I ask a question? I'm sorry. Pardon me.
So they've seen no change from last?
They're saying they're not seeing a change. I'd like to get some of the data, though, just to make that clear.
Okay. And then they, I'm sorry. The other thing this brings up is, you know, there was a lot of discussion both before the strategic plan and during the strategic plan about us shifting start times back. So this kind of brings me back to that and if we're.
Well, for the high school in particular, I think that was our greater concern. The teenagers who needed the extra sleep.
Right, but it may particularly, I mean, if we switch one, very often there's a, you know, a trickle effect for the whole district sometimes, depending on how things get shifted, so.
So it could alter our plans next year for the Dragon tutoring program.
So is that, and I guess then my question was, are those conversations still going on? We haven't gotten an update?
About the high school, yes. The scheduling committee Mr. Lasser put together is involved in that. But no, we haven't gotten Irving. We're not ready to see what the ripple effects are.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Maggici?
Right. So I can see, I guess we have nine teachers that are, have been appointed to this role. And I guess they would be appointed and the hours would be distributed based on the number of kids that are actually going to be in the program. So my question was, how many kids were utilizing the program when it was an after-school and how many now will be as a before-school? And to tie into what Sharice was asking, what percentage would you say of the kids that we would hope would be in this program are actually in this program?
Great questions. Now, follow-up.
Yeah, because, I mean, I've had children that were recommended for the program. And one of my concerns when that, when we got that recommendation was it, just a form was sent home and you either sent it in or you didn't. You know, like, there wasn't a, it just seemed like, in one year, I just didn't see it. You know, like, that year I may have put my child in it, but I just didn't see it in the folder until, you know, however long after. And then it was, you know, they'd already had everything set up. So it seems like we need more of like an opt-in kind of situation. So, you know, we're not missing kids who, maybe whose families would want to participate, but they just don't get the form back.
I have to deter, I know one of my own children qualified for Dragon tutoring based on her academic needs. So I don't know if we still follow the plan that has us targeting certain students, as Mr. Maggici was pointing out, or if we open it up to everybody, which may be one reason why you didn't get a form one year, because perhaps your children.
No, I'm not saying I didn't get it. I did get it, I just didn't see it. So it wasn't that I didn't want her to participate. I literally just didn't see the form. So, but then there wasn't a follow-up from the district to say, hey, we sent you this form, but we never heard from you.
I see.
Does that mean you don't want to participate or did you just not see it? You know, there was never a, there was never a follow-up after that one form went out. So just because I didn't send it back didn't mean that I didn't want my kid to participate.
But you know what? I'll use this as an opportunity just to give the entire Board a rundown on the state of Dragon tutoring.
Fabulous.
I had another question. We're just talking, when we're talking Dragon tutoring, we're talking Irving and Bartle students, right?
Correct. Irving, just Irving.
Just Irving, okay.
They call it something different at Bartle.
Oh, okay. Because, I mean, from my experience as a mother and, you know, like, understanding child development, 7:30 is late for kids.
Right, that little.
They're up really early. So they do have more energy in the morning. And I think that the teachers, you know, noticing that is totally in line with what I know of child development. Like, I think that makes sense for kids this young. So, you know, there's concerns about transportation either way. And maybe it's like the lesser of, you know, two, not ideal situations. You know, like, the lesser bad. I don't know. I mean, the transportation situation is an issue. I don't have any ideas about how to address that, honestly. But I do think that the morning, as far as, you know, their capabilities and their energy levels, is probably best for kids this age. For high schoolers, the opposite completely. So, yeah. Yeah, Lillian's like, yeah.
And I absolutely agree with that. I think that, you know, when I posed the question, I was wearing my equity hat.
Yeah.
And I want to be sure that when we're setting up programs, we're not creating structural, equity issues by the way that we are instituting a program at the school, which is supposed to be a program which assists students. But if the students, if a portion of the students who need the assistance cannot receive it because of the way the program is structured, then we cannot close the opportunity gap for those kids. That opportunity gap remains in place. And I absolutely agree, and I said that to Scott, that developmentally, it is absolutely, you know, I am 100% with the teachers, understand that fully, that developmentally, it is the right time of day. I mean, my kids are up, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, the younger two. The older one, not so much.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem is it's not good developmentally for parents. You know, to get the teams there. That's what I worry about.
Nothing is, let's be honest.
It's easier for me to get them places in the afternoon than in the morning.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, and also, you know, for working parents, the morning might actually work better because they're off to work if they're working early. You know, unless they're doing a night shift or something. I would think that the morning would actually work better in that case. But, you know, I have no idea if this is any kind of trail we'd like to lead, but maybe there's a way that the school can organize parents in different neighborhoods to, you know, carpool or walk pool or however. I don't know if we're, you know, divulging too much information to other parents doing so, but it's something that, you know, maybe we can organize. I don't think that we could put any money into a bus or anything, I'm sure. That's a pipe dream. But potentially maybe organize different neighborhood, you know, walking pools.
Yeah, walking school pools. Helping, well, helping people.
Just to get some parents off the hook.
Helping build people into the community in a way that allows them to then be able to identify people that they can rely on for that purpose.
Yeah.
For people who are especially folks who are new to the district or who have not been very engaged in the district, it can be difficult to make that connection with other parents, to be able to find. I know I can pick up the phone and I can call, you know, seven different people and say, you know, can you get my kid today? Such and such is going on. So, you know, and maybe that's an option. Maybe that is something that can be done with the PTOs or through, you know, with the office with a handful of volunteers to try to match people up from the same kind of little neighborhoods.
And I think that maybe kind of goes back to what I was saying that when my daughter was recommended, I just got a form and you either sent it back or you didn't. Maybe it doesn't, it shouldn't just be a form that you sign up on, like, it's a yes or a no. And if it's a no, is it because you don't want your child to participate? Is it because you can't access the program? Is it because, and then you kind of use that as an opportunity to have a conversation with that family to see if, okay, if the reason you can't do it is because of transportation, let's see if we can help you figure that piece out.
Or maybe we add a little line to the response form that says, checkbox. I can't because of transportation.
Right, right. Not interested, can't because of, you know, like.
That sounds like a great idea, a follow-up.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I felt like was missing when I missed it.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't a lack of interest. It was literally just, you know.
And many parents have more than one child, you know. It's just, you have to get two babies and a toddler and a first grader out of the house. No thanks. You know, I can imagine lots of parents opting out of that and saying, I'll just try tutoring at home because it's more convenient in my life. I mean, it's worth a second question, I think. It's a great idea.
Right. So you mentioned opting out. So there isn't really actually an opting out, right?
Well, no, parents don't have to do it. I mean, it's an optional program.
No, but I'm wondering whether maybe there, maybe we would want to look at potentially having an opt-out or a question to the parents. Would you like to, do you want to opt your child out of this opportunity?
That's a great idea, change of default. I mean, that seems to help people when you change the default from opt-in to opt-out. Frequently in many contexts, that gets you more people.
It might help with the follow-up from the school, too, potentially. I don't know. It's something to consider.
So the, I guess the, would it be, the assumption would be, we assume your child wants to, you know, show up for tutoring at 7:30. But I don't think we can make that assumption. I think that's a. Well, it wouldn't be like an enforceable assumption. That would strike me as strange, personally. But I'll let the administration hash that one out. All right, so was that, that was everything for personnel? Okay. And does anybody have any other questions about any other items for Sharice? Okay. So we will move on to policies and regulations with Ann. There is nothing new that we did not discuss last week, with one exception. We now have the organizational chart, thank you, Scott, to review. If anybody has questions, now would be a time to ask.
I have a question on something that was in the folder on policy, which is the policy on public.
I should clarify. Yes, so, I'm sorry. Well, can I clarify after Ms. Gallant is finished? Because it's a whole story.
Sure, if it's separate, okay, terrific. Let's do it that way.
A good story, though.
Wait, what is where? What is, I don't see this, actually, in my policy folder.
You have received an email out of the blue.
Oh, we did?
To a link to a special folder. And I'll explain what that link is.
I missed it.
It's in your inbox.
Who's it from? Is it Susan?
Yeah. Susan sent an email that had a pointer to the drive about changes to the, to the policy on public comment. So, and then I looked at the, I looked at the agenda and it wasn't on there.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with tonight.
Interesting point, Mark.
But it's good news.
Okay, let's go back.
Hmm.
I have too much time on my hands.
So I have a Goofy, just correction for the word chart. Absolutely. Some reason psychologist is bolded under the teen center.
Where's the chart?
It's Policy 1110 in the policy folder. Let's see. In my policy folder, under policy first reading. It's, there should be five policies in there. Do you have that?
I don't know where to find the policy folder.
Well, I mean, I'm the one who had no idea that there was an extra policy.
Policy folders. There's a lot of folders in there.
There's a lot of folders. Yes, you have like agenda, what else do we got? Here we got minutes, agenda, curriculum, blah, blah, blah. Policy first reading should be in your, in your general meeting folder. I can actually send you, or share it with you right now. Let's see. You don't have it in your folder? Are you not seeing the first? Something's not happening for, over there at that end of the table. Let me, now I can't find it. I just lost mine.
Policies and regs.
Policy first, yeah, sorry. Ruth, I'm about to share it with you. It did get shared with me, so I don't know why it didn't wind up in Ruth's. Okay, how do I do this? Open with, I don't really want to open it with. All right, the whole audience doesn't need to hear it. Share, there it is.
Go to shared with me.
So did the changes, did the changes that we discussed last week get worked into these versions?
Yes, just one second, please. I just shared it with you. You should get it pop up?
I see it, yeah.
Oh, you got it there? Excellent. Yes, I believe they did. I looked at them quickly. Let's just check. 2310 was the student grouping. I don't think we made any additional changes beyond what we discussed last week. 2624, grading. I think one of us might have corrected a typo, but it, or that was Mark earlier in the process. Yes, that's the same. 5511, dress and grooming. Yes, last week we decided to delete the second-to-last paragraph involving staff members and their demonstration of wholesome attitudes. So did we decide to ultimately leave the line that's bolded, the Board of Education prohibits students from wearing while-on-school property clothing that advertises illegal activities? I believe we did. And we decided that there's a gang policy elsewhere that dealt with. Right. I think we did decide to leave that.
We did.
All right, did we, maybe we never had a real consensus on it. I think we sort of, the discussion trailed off. Do people have a?
We agreed to keep it, but of course, the other language about gangs and stuff went away.
Right. So there would just be the bold setups. I mean, I'm open to discussing that again. I do think we didn't sort of formally say, okay, that's in.
I just, I find the phrasing strange. Advertises illegal activities.
So what would be an example?
Oh, like smoke weed.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't really care one way or the other.
Maybe it's advertises, it's like promotes.
Because lots of things that are legal are not moral. I mean, I don't know. I don't want to get into a philosophy.
I'd be happy to delete it. I mean, I don't know.
It's just, if something's advertising, you know, a Wall Street bank, maybe that's.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah.
Maybe we should just get rid of it and then, although that, you know. Here's the question. We want to constrain discretion to some extent, right? We don't want teachers saying, I think that's inappropriate for some students and not others. Not that our teachers would attempt to do that, but, you know. We're all human beings. At the same time, we don't want to sort of encourage disparate enforcement by putting in things that don't need to be there. Like, oh, what's an advertisement? I, you know. I don't know what the best way to go is. I really, I feel like in this case, it's a fairly minor thing and it opens, it doesn't really make it more or less likely that we're going to have disparate enforcement.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I think, I think it seems, I don't know if Sadarsky's saying this exactly, but it sounds to me awkward. It's just a little awkward. It doesn't sound like it makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, if there would be some other phrase like lewd imagery or something like that, that would make more sense to me. But advertising illegal behavior, I mean, I don't know what that means.
Well, illegal activities, like, you know, smoking pot. Yeah, I see how it's open interpretation. Also, it's awkwardly written from an English, you know, eloquence perspective.
I didn't think I was a grammar nerd, but that's all it is.
No, I agree. I mean, I think lewd also gets into, oh, no, you have a poster, you know, James Bond movie poster on your shirt, you know, that's kind of lewd.
And then, yeah, right.
So maybe we just leave it out, on the other hand. Do we want to constrain teachers by means of this policy?
Well, we do want to help the, we want to help the principals, right? We want to give them some guidance as to what they can and cannot do, what they can point to and what they should be looking for. We help them out a little bit.
We could leave that to the regulation. I don't know. We don't have too much in this particular policy. The policy's basically like, dress normally. this particular policy, the policy's basically like, dress normally, and, you know, the regulation will hash it out in the handbooks, I don't know.
So, what's in the gang policy? I'm just going to read the paragraphs that's in the actual gang policy, it says, so, one that's already part of our, part of our policy binder, "To further ensure the safety and well-being of all students in the district and to increase awareness within the school community regarding potential gang activity, students are prohibited from wearing while-on-school grounds or at any school-related or sponsored activity on school buses and any other place where students are supervised by school district staff any type of clothing or accessory that would indicate a student has membership in or affiliation with any gang associated with criminal activities pursuant to..." So, it's actually spelled out much better there than the clunkiness we're trying to put into here, so, it sounds like the only thing we need to cover here is, you know, shirt with a big pot leaf, or, you know, something like that.
Do we want to say like, yeah, promoting alcohol and illegal drugs?
Do you have an idea, Lillian?
Yeah, if you change the language to be something like prohibit apparel that promotes lewd, illegal, or violent behavior.
I'd like to leave out lewd and violent, because then we get movie posters, and we get, I don't know, I, violent, I mean, you know, raised fist, fight the power, is that violent? I like alcohol and drugs, that's pretty clear, there's no question about what it is, illegal drugs, not Tylenol.
I think maybe just illegal activities, period, is okay, I think the word that sticks on me is advertises, like, it's just, it's like promotes, maybe, or promotes, or glorifies, or something like that, advertises is what makes it.
I think it's less subjective, obviously, the better, because...
Promotes is a better word.
It's a better word, I don't think it's less subjective, but it's, it sounds better.
I think that the goal here was to just to give, you know, to give obvious guidance, as Rob said, to the, and Ann said, to the administration, and illegal might be difficult, but it's more clear and less subjective.
Yeah.
That's what I meant by subjective.
Yeah, and it's, so, in that sense, and we cleaned up a lot of language that was much, much, much more subjective, you know, amorphous kind of wording about gangs and stuff that just didn't seem to make much sense.
I mean, that's, as it turns out, already in our policy binder.
Now, I know, we need to...
We took it out of this policy.
We maybe want to revisit that one.
One step at a time.
But, that's right, one step at a time, but, I think promote, I think you used the word promotes, yeah, that's better, that's better.
Okay.
Let's change that.
Everybody okay with that? Changes, changing advertises to promotes?
Yep.
And then we're done with that one, unless somebody else has something about that one.
So, we can vote to adopt that with a change for first reading? Okay, cool.
Yep, we're still first reading.
We didn't have any, we're not changing the word illegal, it's just that we're changing the word promotes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I forgot my...
Yeah, because then that covers, you know, whatever, you know, you can still wear a Marvel shirt that maybe has some, you know, some of those, dude, some of those Marvel shirts are off the hook.
It also prevents us from having to change it should the law change.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's illegal, it's illegal.
Right.
So, no matter what the legal precedent is, it still fits.
Right.
We don't have to shift it at all.
Okay, and so, we just had one, you want to go over the other small changes, or?
Yeah, let's see, I don't think there was too much, the Policy 8504, Safe Roots to School, there were no changes beyond what we had already put in there, so we went over that in its entirety last time, and I think that is everything, 2624, 2310, yeah, I think we got everything there.
And I just kind of said to Scott on the side, I didn't remember there being like names and phone numbers on our org chart before, so that's, he's going to take that.
Oh, good point.
There are two versions of this chart, one that we go public with, and then one that's internal.
Right, so we...
The one that goes public.
Because the last thing we want to do is have to reapprove this every time, you know, I mean, hopefully, none of these people leave anytime soon, but, you know, that's not something we want to saddle us or another board with, is every time you have a staff change, you've got to change your org chart.
And the school psychologist is under the teen center?
Yeah, yep.
And is there only one?
There's one that's accredited, and the others are...
Oh, right, there's...
Maybe that needs to be clarified, because that just means Dr. Roth, right, not the school psychologist that we employ.
Right, there's another one that sits in Bartle, of the office in Bartle.
This chart, no, Dr. Roth is only affiliated with the teen center, he is not a child study team member.
No, 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 but, what I mean is, this says school psychologist, but not all school psychologists.
That's correct.
So, maybe that needs to be clarified a little bit more, to say the teen center, the teen center psychologist instead of school psychologist?
Good point.
While we're on policy, could I ask about anything from Strauss Esme on any kind of audit? Do we have anything on auditing our policies?
Scott, do you have an update on that for us? Strauss Esme's much-delayed audit of our policy manual, has it been completed?
That one's wrong, sorry.
Sorry, the Strauss Esme audit of our policy manual, is that progressing?
Well, that's the good news. Are we ready?
Oh, let's hear it!
So, you got the link to this folder, because Susan Odato did receive our audit, listed something like 70 recommended changes to be made to policies.
Which may make everyone groan, but it's a lot less than going through the whole policy manual.
Absolutely.
So, 70 is calls for celebration, even though that sounds horrible.
So, with Susan, Susan Odato gets a special public shout-out, she, over the last week, because we have had this, I'm sorry, I haven't said anything earlier, for a week, but I wanted to...
This was our holiday surprise? Surprise, everyone, your audit is here!
That was funny, that was a genuine laugh. So, she spent about a week going over each policy and preparing the drafts for the policy committee to look at for all of those recommendations that were made, and they're all in that folder, when they, I think she sent the link to you guys, because that was like the first file in the folder that established she has a share relationship for Google, so in other words, you now have share rights to see the file.
I'm so glad I did it look, this was such a better, so much better as a surprise.
My wish came true.
We'll have to get clarification from her about the policy, but I'll ask her about that separately, about the folder, I'm sorry, I'll ask her about that separately.
Okay.
That's great, though, that she did that, I don't know where to find it yet, but...
Yeah, and just to, you know, support what Darcy said, 70 doesn't seem like a whole lot, I still have those two red binders at home taking up a quarter of my bookshelf.
Yep.
It's incredible, so 70 is nothing.
I think I'm going to purge those.
I see where she is.
I think I suggest we all come back with those, and we shred them, and then we...
I'm going to save them for sledding.
Yeah, if you look in the policy...
I found it.
Oh, you did?
Do you want to explain where it is for people?
Yes, so if you go back out to the main board folder, and you go into the policy folder from there, you'll see that Susan Odato added a whole bunch of things today.
Right, it's not marked as new policies, it's just as policy with a modified date of today.
Oh, policies and regs?
I don't think it's that, my drive, let me see, my drive, Shared With Me, Shared With Me, Board Folder.
Yeah, a lot.
Policy.
All right, well, we can figure this out.
Policy, does it subfolder, policy, okay, all right.
We'll figure, we'll figure this out offline.
Yes.
Okay, so if there aren't any other questions about any of the policies, then we will move on to public comment, which, unless Chris, Chris, no, you're good?
I'm sorry, could I, do we want to talk about that, 0167, was that on, was that going to be added to our agenda for tonight? The policy that Susan sent us, that was just to establish the folder?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to skip over public comment, because we don't have any public here sadly, so we will move to, oh, actually, do we have our, our committee reports, or our liaison reports, sorry. No, but we still have them on there, sorry, that should have been before, so, let's see, Municipal Drug and Alcohol Lines, we did last time, Michelle, you don't, I'm assuming you don't have anything from HPTV?
Not since last week, no.
And actually, maybe we need to reach, can you reach out to, can you reach out to Matt, because who's going to be the contact person now that Matt, I'm assuming that now that Matt is on council?
I'm blanking on his name, I apologize.
Do we need to vote?
Don't we need to vote?
Yeah, yeah, no, we will.
See, that's, number 13 is the board...
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
We missed the voting.
Sorry, sorry, I went out of order.
I'll forget this app, so it's...
Point of order.
Okay, I'll save it for later, yeah.
All right, so we will, sorry about that, we will go back and vote, so, first, the curriculum and instruction, Michelle, you want to move those items?
Yes, I would like to move items one to three, please.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Linda, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
All right, Mark, could you move the finance items?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 22.
And can we get a second?
Second.
Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
I was standing at 18:19, yes, I'm a vendor.
Okay, and could, Charisse, could you move the personnel items?
Sure, I'd like to move items one through 23 with the date change of December 13th, 2016, on seven, nine, and 10.
That is everything? Okay, sorry, and Mark seconded, and can we get a roll call, Linda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
I'll be abstaining on seven, eight, nine, and 10, and yes on everything else.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, Ann, could you move the policies for first reading?
Yes, one moment, please, I would like to move for first reading, the policies, whose numbers I am just now coming back to, policy, well, you know what, should we, should we move Policy 1110, the organizational chart, with the amendment that no phone numbers will be there, and names also will take out?
Yeah, any of the changes that we talked about will automatically be worked in.
Okay, so I'd move that we accept the following for first reading, 1110, organizational chart with the amendments we discussed, 2310, pupil grouping, 2624, grading system, and 5511, dress and grooming with the change we discussed, changing advertises to promotes, and we also have, oh, I'm sorry, those are the policies for revision, so essentially, we are adopting them for first reading, we also have the new policy for first reading, that is 8504, Safe Roots to School.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
And can we get a roll call, Linda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the board liaison reports, that I'm not out of order, so...
Yes, so, since Matt Hirsch is not fulfilling that role, I have been receiving communications from Hyam Cohen.
Okay.
So, I'll reach out to him, I think that the next meeting, though, is for later this week.
Okay.
Or not the first meeting, the next.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great, so, and how was that changed, you're doing the interviews and stuff like that, because Matt historically was doing them.
Gary Leslie, the producer of HPTV, has been doing them, and I think he did a pretty nice job on the last one.
All right, and I saw that it's now linked on our website, so that's great.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. So, let's see, Rob, HPEF.
Nothing new.
Nothing new, okay, and Judy's not here, and Michelle, we talked about library stuff last time, and then, but we do have someone...
I don't have any problem announcing that our supervisor of humanities, Suzanne Ackley, will be the liaison now to the public library, so I've provided her the dates of the board meetings, and she'll start repping us, I think they have one coming up next week, week from today.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Wonderful. And then for board meetings, will she report to you?
I'll have her prepare a report, and then I can share that report.
That would be great, I just, I wanted to ask if she's aware of the voting role that she's playing when she goes to...
That she is.
Okay.
She, I'll probably, yes, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Is that part of her duties, or will we be paying for that, for her...
Paid for that?
For her to go to those meetings?
No, that's part of her, her role, that's what it is to be an educational leader.
Okay, so, Shared Services is me with my name spelled wrong, not that it really matters, but maybe we should fix that, Dorisi, it's interesting, it's just not me, but Scott and I did have a, I guess we ended up having a phone conference call with Mayor Gail Brel Mittler and Council President Suzie Wolkowitz, which was very helpful last week, we got to discuss numerous items, although, you know, us having those meetings is just kind of us maintaining our relationship with the borough, it's not really the Shared Services, like, I think there was at some point a Shared Services Committee that the, that the borough ran, but, and we've still not, I forgot to ask Gail about that, can you, which one of us should do that, do you think? Do you think you should do that?
Well, do we need a Shared Services?
Well, it's not ours, it's their committee, I'm not sure...
I'll ask her.
Yeah, so maybe if you could follow up with, with Gail, and find out if that is still meeting, if they're not meeting, if, like, what happened to that?
I would mind calling G. Borough Relations, or something along those lines.
But, but, that's what I mean, I think Shared Services was...
I'll find...
Yeah, it was an actual committee that they had, it wasn't just, you know, communications between the district and the municipality, which should happen as a matter of course. So, Ruth, do you have anything new for us from CPAC? I don't remember.
Not new, but I announced it last time, upcoming this Sunday, the 18th, from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Senior Center is a holiday party for all students in district and out of district, special needs students.
Oh, that's wonderful, so how does that get advertised? Does that just go off the email?
I believe that went out through the email, I think I saw that there, and then Tara was going to put it on the Facebook page.
Great, all right, wonderful, so, Charisse, did you have anything additional for us for parents of students of color?
Yes, they met last week, they are asking for the schools to look into the lunch and recess detentions at Irving and Bartle School, parents are very upset that their kids are being denied that recess time to run around, especially those, a couple of parents who know that they have kids who are kind of rambunctious, who need to burn off that energy before they get back in the classroom, so they're asking for the schools to look into that, and see if there's another way that they can go, they were happy that we were addressing dress code in the policy, and hope that the schools will also look at what's on the books in terms of implementation, I explained that there's a difference between what the board can do versus what, what is really a school-level decision in terms of the actual implementation of dress code policies versus, you know, just setting a general code of the policy, which was under us, the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice made a presentation at the Municipal Center, they have been working with the town on the municipal IDs, it looks like everything is going to begin to move forward for the municipal IDs, it was approved unanimously, and, so they were very excited about that, and they're looking at, they were, Teen Center reached out to them about planning a female empowerment conference, conference, a meeting with joint program with the Highland Park Parents Students of Color and the Teen Center, so they're going to be moving forward with that, as well as beginning the process of identifying a date for the diversity dinner, which will happen in the spring, John Hewlum also came and gave us an update on the African-American History Project, it's going fantastically, he's recruiting a new group of students, I He's recruiting a new group of students, I believe mostly sophomores and juniors who are going to be recruited into the program to continue the documentary process and learning storytelling and filmmaking. He's going to be doing a Thursday, January nineteenth screening of his basketball film in New Brunswick.
Oh, nice.
And he said he would provide us with more information as that date approached. If folks did not hear about it, there is also shared through our website, December the eighteenth, this Sunday at one P.M., is a march, We the People Against Hate March here in Highland Park. I don't really have any information about it, but it was shared on our Facebook page. So, yeah, if anybody else knows about that and wants to...
Looks like Lily does.
Give, oh, good, okay.
I don't know everything about it, but several different clubs in the high school have worked with promoting and organizing it.
Oh, good.
Saga Women's Issues Club, and I think I see it at the table, have all done work in promoting it within their groups and trying to get a lot of people out for it and maybe even, like, setting it up, so.
Oh, great.
Do you know where people are gathering?
I think they start at the Reformed Church, there's a flyer online.
Okay.
Okay, great. Did you have anything else, Sharice?
Oh, here's, River Road and Lincoln Ave.
And that's, I'm sorry, what time did you say that is?
One P.M.
One P.M., Sunday...
Sunday...
River Road, Lincoln Ave.
Yes, this Sunday.
Got it. All right.
May I make a comment slash ask a question? I just wanted to say that I hope that we, as a board, or that the administration can follow up on the concern about lunch and recess detentions. We're hearing about that from a number of quarters. I believe we got an email from a parent, not a post-op parent, who was concerned about that. I know that, as a parent at Bartle, I hear from numerous parents that they are very unhappy about that, and it's interesting to hear that post-op parents are also reporting that that's an issue. I know in our, I believe in our board goals, we finally settled on researching the adequacy of recess time in our schools and also researching, I believe, best practices in that regard, and it certainly seems to me that that would fall under that heading. I would very much like to know if there is a sort of a formal policy at Bartle and Irving about withholding recess, if there is, or if there isn't, or if there's a practice. I know what I know as a parent, that it happens all the time, but I guess I would like to hear an official account from the administration, if that would be appropriate, Darcy.
Well, first, I want to recommend we discuss this maybe as a superintendent presentation item, because it's in board liaison reports, and though it's a hot issue, I'll say a few words now, but then I'd be more than glad to formally follow up.
Sure, sure, right.
I do have a meeting, do have a meeting with at least one parent who reached out to, I think, the whole board.
Yes, I think that's what the Malians reference.
Right.
That meeting is after the break.
That's great.
We just couldn't connect sooner. However, I had met with Mr. Benjamin and Ms. Crane, and we're going to meet again, so I am researching the rationale behind it. I think there is some misperception about why students are being taken out of recess. That's part of the problem, but again, I don't, this is not the time, I think, for us to be getting into too much, because I don't have enough information to share with you yet.
Right. I will say, just as a piece of input, not to engage in a discussion, I'm sure there are misperceptions about what goes on. In some instances, it's not a misperception, the parents directly tell the students, you guys were too loud yesterday, so you're in for extra detention time at lunch, you know, the whole class is, is kept in, so I don't believe that's a misperception. It's been heard from enough students, enough different times, enough different places and contexts, but I'm sure there are other instances where, yes, there are misperceptions, so, yes, I agree.
So I'll be sure to follow up with the board, you know, with a formal, in a formal manner, whether it's a presentation or...
That's great.
Maybe even a curriculum and instruction committee presentation.
That's great. It seems to be a real area of concern across a variety of different parts of the community, so that would be fantastic. Thank you.
All right, and Mark, today, I'm sorry, Sharice, were you, did you have anything else for, nope, did anybody else have any questions? I did, I skipped over you entirely, I'm very sorry.
I had a very brief, and I was going to do it with the Board of Health.
I'm skipping voting, I'm skipping you.
It's fine.
It's been a long day, forgive me.
I could, I do, so we, Linda, Linda got us the wording for the contract with the HPAA earlier today, and I sent the, all of the folks on our committee and their committee a few changes, and I think that Mr. Lassiter sent a change as well, so I just would say everyone should please review that. There's an email going around with one clarification of some wording. Once we do that, we're ready to sign. So just those of you on the committee, just check. But it's ready, it's, I'd say it's virtually ready to sign, and it's good, it's solid, it's not too long, it's only thirteen pages, it's definitely reviewable, and it's great.
I will make sure to do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so Ann, did you have anything for human relations?
Nothing beyond what I reported last week, thank you.
Okay. And Mark, Board of Health?
Okay, so the Board of Health did meet last Thursday. I want to say that I had a big thank you from Diane Heimlich, who's co-president and who runs the meeting, that the board is sending someone. You know, she, she said to me that in the past, they would have a lot of Board of Health issues that were associated with the schools, and there was nowhere to go with it, it was very, very difficult for them. So this is very good, and I'm finding it very rewarding, it's very, very helpful. Two, so substantive issues, two things have come up. One of them is, I think, very, very positive, that the county Board of Health has offered to run programs for middle school and high school students. I've been in communication with Scott for the last, for some time about it. We're trying to work with the Board of Health county person, who's also, turns out to be a Highland Park resident, Terry Maines, and they've offered to come in at no charge, run a program in middle school, high school. I think Scott is suggesting the teen center would be a good place to start, and run a program on smoking and the ill effects of smoking, and I took a packet of materials they use, and Scott has that in his hands now, so that's very, very good. They also produce a, a book, a little kid book slated for, like, second and third graders. They made lots of copies, and it's very cute and nice, and it's kind of my anti-smoke, my non-smoking world, or something, and they also offered to give us lots of copies of those and talk to the teachers about it and get them into the hands of second and third graders.
Great.
So that would really be good. The other thing is, is a different kind of issue, which is the health inspector noted that the middle school, high school oven hoods, I mean, this is just kind of a very specific thing, need to be re-inspected, cleaned and re-inspected on a certain schedule, and they're due. So Linda and I have been talking, and I'm sure she's on top of that, and, and they'll be...
They're scheduled to be cleaned. I was just looking for it, I think, I think over winter break, but it might be sooner.
Winter break, yeah. And she'll come back, she'll come back to look at it after we tell her that, that the, they've been, that they've been cleaned. So this is all good, and it's a way to get to us, and we can improve things. So the meeting was very good, and the meetings are very good, it's very interesting.
Great.
Good for us.
Thank you so much, Mark.
Uh-huh.
And now I'm going to share inappropriately. When I was in kindergarten, Officer Friendly came to my class and told me how bad smoking was, and I went home and I asked my mom why she wanted to die, because Officer Friendly came to my class and said, if you smoke, you're going to die. And my mother said she took her last pack of cigarettes, threw them in the garbage, and that was it. That was my mom's story. Whether that was the reality of it, I don't know, I was only five, but that's the...
Way to go, Darcy.
That is, that is the family lore, so if we can get little second and third graders going home and...
That's great.
Like, using that pressure point that they've got, I'm all for it.
My kids have, yeah, done exactly that with fastening the seatbelts or texting all driving, so thank you.
They're fantastic little ambassadors.
They really are.
They carry a lot of weight, it's, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. So next is me for the delegates to the New Jersey School Boards Association, and I did, oh, I don't have anything for that. Wait, no, this is, oh, New Jersey School Boards, okay, sorry. Well, it's actually for the New Jer, New Jersey School Boards Delegate Assembly, not just school boards. Did that language change, or am I just confused tonight? But anyway, the delegate assembly was on Saturday, and I did go, which was questionable, because of course, the night before, my battery decided to die, so then there was a lot of finagling that had to happen to be able to get children where they needed to go and me where I needed to go, but it did happen, I'm happy to say. And, but then I am sad to say that the resolution that we spent a lot of time going back and forth about here at the board table was passed by the delegate assembly, and it, it was one of those discussions where it was kind of interesting, because the vast majority of the people who came to the microphone, so, and just so you know what the process is, they, you know, they, the person who is putting, the person from the board who's putting forward the resolution comes forward with their resolution, and someone has to second it, and then there's, it's very timed, it's not like we talk about things and we just kind of go on and on, you know, until we kind of flesh something out. You've got X amount of time, and when that time is up, it's up, and each person who comes up, you have a set amount of time, and you've got a buzzer, and it's, it's very structured and it's very formal. The majority of the people who got up to speak were all opposed, or, I'm sorry, were all, like, all, yes, were all opposed, wanted us to not adopt this resolution that the School Boards Association was putting forward. Then the time ran out for discussion, more people still wanted to discuss it, someone then moved, we want more time for discussion, you can make a motion for more time for discussion, that has to be seconded, and then that has to be approved by the entire body. People wouldn't even approve the extra time to talk about it, and then it got voted on and it got, it got approved. So that was just like, it was really kind of like, I felt, I felt a little, I felt a little deflated, because I didn't hear, the couple of people that did get up and speak in favor of it, I didn't hear any compelling arguments or even arguments that I thought really related to, to the issue at hand, it was more kind of like, you know, like, well, we've got these lawyers coming after us and it costs a lot of money, but, I don't know that shifting the burden of the proof is really going to necessarily stop that from happening, and so it, it wasn't, it wasn't a terribly fun delegate assembly, I have to say. I like it better when we have really cool resolutions that we're putting before, before the body and they approve them, that's much more fun. And this was somewhere like in the, like, seventies, high seventies to low twenties, you know, in favor opposed, so, so that was that. And otherwise, you know, there were a couple of speeches and not much else to report. So Rob, I'm assuming you probably don't have much for the Middlesex County School Boards Association?
Nothing going on there.
Okay, and I am going to ask Linda, can we add, or Scott, whoever, I guess Susan's the one who actually does the agendas, right? Can we add, we need to add one more, because we have one more liaison position. Remember, a couple of meetings ago, the green team folks had asked that we appoint someone to, to liaise with the, the green team, so Rob had offered to do that, so if we could add...
Which, Rob?
That's right.
Rob Ruslowich. So if we can add that to, to our board liaison reports, and you have anything for us today, sir?
Another meeting's to go tomorrow.
Come on, if you can make it, that's...
Try it.
Yeah, sure, I'll try it.
Okay. All right, great. So that brings us to my president's report, which is the resolution that we, I tediously ran, read into the record last week, and I will not do again this week. So it's the resolution of the Highland Park Board of Education and supported New Jersey Legislature's concurrent resolution in reference to the graduation requirements, regulations, education law center lawsuit, and S. two-one-four-seven slash A. three-eight-four-nine. Did anybody have any questions, concerns, thoughts? Nothing?
Looks good.
Nothing? All right, then we can just vote on it, we don't need to belabor the point. So can, can I get a motion to pass that resolution?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinikola?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So that brings us to old business, and we have our board calendar for 2017, and Scott and I did make a couple of tweaks to that this week when we talked, is that, that's, so that should be in your, your board folder, oh, yai-yai, I just backed out of the wrong place.
We added some locations to the list?
Yep.
But the dates didn't change, right?
Tweak the date or two?
We did add, where is it? Oh, it's under the other folder, right. So you'll notice that we, where is it, where is it, where is it? So we actually added, remember, we talked last time about how we weren't going to be able to do two meetings in April because of the way that the holiday fell, but that last year, we had, we remembered that we had done a special meeting that wasn't our, our public hearing on the budget where we're going to vote on it, but that was just a public meeting, a special public meeting dedicated to nothing but the budget, where the pub, we would discuss it, the public could come out and comment, so we added that, we actually added that on April twenty-fourth. So we would have, on April third, we would have a, we would be having a workshop meeting that month, we would just be having a voting session on April third, and then on April twenty-fourth would be that public meeting on the budget. And if anybody thinks of a better name, we couldn't think of a better name sitting there, because we have the public hearing on the budget, which is where we vote on it, but then we were like, so what do we call the other one? Differentiate, so...
Budget bonanza.
We just came up with the public...
Right. I don't know.
The budget bonanza. So we just came up with public meeting on the budget, and I guess when we, we, you know, we advertise it, we'll...
Make it sound more exciting.
Right, we'll, we'll explain the difference between the two. And yeah, then otherwise, like Scott said, we just kind of put in more moving around to the different buildings, so we get to do adorable things like we, we just did today.
I just want to say that was unbearably cute.
Yeah.
Loved it.
And I have to say, I'm going to lobby for more performances and stuff like next year, too. I, I just really, I'm a sucker for, you know, a chorus coming out, or a jazz band coming out if we go to the high school, or, you know, something, something along those lines.
A sneak peek at the musical, or...
Now you're getting crazy. But yeah, I mean, like, yeah, something to highlight those different programs would be, would be fantastic. So if anybody has any ideas, throw, you know, run them by me or run them by Scott, because we're back to empty seats. We like you all at home, but we like you to come and see us, too.
Everyone's so cozy, though, they're watching us on the livestream.
We're on a board variety show.
Speak for yourself.
I could play the clarinet.
There's a lot of talent at this table, there's a lot of talent.
I think we'll skip on that.
We're all good with holidays and stuff on the calendar, right? This has been through the, the multiple-step vetting process?
Yeah.
Run by, we make sure that no holidays are unnecessarily impacted.
Did, you didn't go through any other, I mean, other than just Google, right?
Correct.
Okay. I think we're okay, though.
Cool.
I certainly see nothing.
Okay.